Going live, you're live.
All right, shall we call the planning and zoning meeting for Monday, February 28th? Two or a roll call, please?
Jim Craig?
Here.
Kevin Neef?
Here.
Lisa Jepson?
Here.
Kenny Jones?
Here.
Terry Trimpy? Mark Ross?
Here.
Jeff Kater?
Here.
All right. Could we get a motion to reelect Mark Ross as vice chairperson? Or if anyone wants to throw their name in the hat? I think we've had informal discussions and no one was eager to throw his name in the hat.
I know, Mark.
All right, we have a nomination for Mark Ross to be vice chairperson.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Is this a roll call or an A and A? All in favor?
A and A.
All in favor, all right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Approval of agenda. We have a motion to approve. Motion to approve, we have a second.
Uh, first I want to ask, is there any, any? New additions?
No additions to the agenda.
Okay, I'll second it again.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have a motion carries. Approval of January 24th, 2022 regular meeting minutes, any changes to the minutes? No changes or edits to the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Mark and Kenny?
Mark, Mark approved, Kenny seconded, sorry, thank you, too. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ask next for the community development director's report. Pat, update us.
You got it. Um, there's only one that I'm updating tonight, and that's the Hiawatha East Edition. Um, that's a two-building site plan that you guys approved last month. Council has agreed that they match the design guideline requirements for that area. And we're currently working with the owner on, I think we're working on some incentives to go along with that. And hopefully, it will go forward with the way it was designed. So we're still, we're still working on it, but it has been approved by council. Do you have any questions about any of the other projects?
About the small lot over here on Boynton and Robbins Road?
The 1004 Robbins Road on the corner by the railroad tracks, it will be coming to you for a site plan. Um, we did do a rezoning on that, of course, so, and, and the council agreed with that as well. The timeframe for that submittal is for next month's meeting as well. So we should be seeing that.
All right.
All right, any other questions for the community development director? Our next item of business is 6A. Consider resolution for recommendation to city council to approve minor revisions to the final PUD submitted by Hall and Hall engineers for the property known as Edgewood Village Edition, Hiawatha, Iowa. Pat, do you have anything that you would like to share with us regarding this resolution?
I would just like to give you a little bit of direction on this particular item. It actually does take two actions. First, there has to be an agreement that we have determined this to be a minor change to the planned unit development. This allows it to go forward without redoing the public hearing process. And the limits for it being a minor, a minor change include limiting the amount of changes to the site plans and the building sizes, of which there were no changes. So it qualifies as a minor change to the planned unit development. So that will be the first action. The second action will be, um, a recommendation to council for approval of the minor change to the planned unit development.
They're putting in a minor change as what?
Um, I could let the owner talk to that, but basically, there is a lot line change in the description of two lots, lots 25 and 26. They used to be in total as far as ownership was concerned. For various reasons, and Josh, if you want to share with him some of the reasons?
Yeah, so we didn't change the lot structure or the building makeup at all. It's still 88 townhome units, or the same square footage of what used to be lot 25 and 26. Um, what D.R. Horton has, has mentioned to us, and we're actually meeting four different cities by the end of Thursday night this week, is due to financing issues and financing opportunities. And where the market is currently at, if it's an individual lot, it opens up secondary market financing. Their target market is really, um, more affordable housing, so people that may need secondary market financing. So all we're doing is placing lot lines on the demising walls, so that every unit is its own lot. That way it opens up the buyer pool and really makes financing, financing opportunities a lot more attractive for their target market.
Yeah, how many, what, just one? Or, or the two?
It used to be lots 25 and 26 to cover 88 units, so now there's at least, like you're going to outlots, now there's at least 88 lots. So every townhome unit will have its own legal parcel. So fourplex, which used to be part of one lot, is now four individual lots.
But you only put one, one fourplex up?
No, there's still 22 fourplexes, same as before, so the building structure and the structure is the same.
All right, okay, that's just a change for people to, to own their lot?
Yep, yep, so we're just adding lot lines on what, what are the demising walls? That way each person owns their own legal real estate, instead of being part of a greater condominium.
Okay, so then basically, you'll still be in their association for long and?
Correct, yes, there'd still be an overall homeowners association. And when you look at the two, a condo document declaration versus a homeowners association, in terms of the legals that, uh, D.R. Horton has presented, other than the name on the face of the cover, they're essentially identical. So the homeowners association will act in, in parallel and, and similar to what the condo, condo regime would have done previously. But now they're all legal lots, so it's a homeowners association.
Okay, but you still go underneath the association? So in other words, that, they're not sitting in there all by themselves, they're still in there with the rest of them?
Correct, all the common areas.
Money and wires going in.
Absolutely. Okay, all right, there'll be a, an association to cover all the common area amenities.
Right, because if they were sitting there by themselves and they only paid a certain amount, would they be hurting if some roof come off or somebody wrecked that? They'd be hurting.
Yes, so, so there's still an association that will cover grounds maintenance, snow, little grass keep, lawn care, we're not, as well as exterior of the facades for the, the common building structures.
Is there going to be a different fee for that person versus the other one?
I would suspect so. So there'll be an overall association that covers everything, primarily to take care of the maintenance. Everybody pays their fair share for instance, the stormwater retention basin. And then the condo units would have their own, specific to a condo user, their own association separate from the single family dwelling association.
But I mean, as far as the condo stuff is concerned, and then your multi-housing, is that, that they're going to be comparable?
Yes. The only thing that would be different is the, the townhome association would cover more in terms of, uh, exterior facade maintenance. Because that's really a, a shared or a commonality between homeowners. Whereas a single family dwelling, they would be responsible for everything on their lot.
Yes, okay, I understand.
So it wouldn't be possible for one of these to fall into disrepair, so to speak, as far as lawn maintenance and that sort of thing? Somebody else is taking care of all the yard, correct, it's all common.
This is future, or is this something typical that I think we made tonight our request to?
We're seeing a, a very strong trend in that direction. So tonight, uh, you're the first group I get to speak to, tomorrow night is Tiffany, Wednesday is Cora Ville, and then Thursday afternoon is Cedar Rapids. So there, all of the, um, the buyer pools essentially are going to this model because of the financing opportunity. It really opens up their, their target market, which is what they, they want to focus on. Instead of selling these for 300, they want to practice what they preach, be able to reach that target market.
Excellent. And fourplex, go fourplex, nice, they're all four, they're connected. And they're making bigger than fourplex.
That is correct, yes.
Are they two stories or?
Yes, two-story ones.
So in other words, you have, uh, one condo on the bottom and one on the top? Or is it vertical ownership?
Vertical on the bottom, you're talking, yeah, okay.
Vertical, all right. Okay, all right. Are you gonna come back and propose another one?
On a new piece of land, hopefully.
No, but I mean, uh, as far as the fourplex, you're only gonna, they were, you're just gonna put one of them in? You're not gonna come back and say, uh, we'd like to do three more of these because they did sell?
Uh, Kenny, this is for all 88. This is for all 22 fourplexes.
Okay, all right, okay.
This is for all of them.
Oh, all 22.
He's asking all of them, yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Would we be comfortable making a motion to approve the request as a minor change? It's a classification, right, Pat?
That's correct.
Classification motion. Would there be a motion to approve the rec, the requested changes as categorized as a minor change, falling within those regulations?
Hold on.
Move, we have a, we have a motion from Mark, do we have a second?
Second.
Kevin, a second, all right? Is, are each of these roll called then?
Yes.
Okay. You want them at one, then a roll call, then the second, then a roll call, right?
Okay, good. Uh, Kenny Jones?
Aye.
Lisa Jepson?
Aye.
Mark Ross?
Aye.
Jeff Kater?
Aye.
Jim Craig?
Aye.
Kevin Neef?
Aye.
Then the second piece of business related to 6A would be to have a motion to approve the requested change. Do we have a motion to approve the requested change? Jim has moved, do we have a second? Jeff has seconded, roll call, please.
Kenny Jones?
Aye.
Lisa Jepson?
Aye.
Mark Ross?
Aye.
Jeff Kater?
Aye.
Jim Craig? Kevin Neef?
Aye.
Next item of business is letter B. Consider a resolution for recommendation to city council to approve minor revisions to the preliminary plat for Edgewood Village Townhomes area submitted by Hall and Hall engineers for the property known as Edwood, Edgewood Village Edition, Hiawatha, Iowa.
This is, this is essentially the same thing, except that it is a formality for plating purposes. So the other-
The first was the PUD and the second is the plat.
Correct.
I didn't ask for that, that one. I don't understand the bank's thinking here, is it just simply because this fixed unit has a price? Of course it would anyway, wouldn't it?
Well, it's, it's the ability to legally define what they're lending against. As opposed to being a part of a greater association, secondary market financing doesn't open up in a condo regime until it's we're going to be 80% owner occupied. Which comes into play that you really can't get 80% of the money in. So they have their own legal parcel that physically describes the real, real estate that they own. Against that, where secondary markets have issue loaning against unit A of this building, lot 26.
I have had that problem, I don't have that, so it just uses financing to define legal description for each individual. That is correct.
Okay, now another thing is, what is association covering? Like mine is studs out, I mean studs out. My association, so the sheetrock and stuff like this is my responsibility. Do you have a pattern set up for this?
I'll answer that in two ways. My, my current understanding is it's from the plywood out. So everything on the face of the building, including windows and doors. But we will give you a copy of the, the proposed covenants, the proposed association declarations, and send that to Pat so that you can review it.
Okay, see, because mine is studs out, so studs are, are included into the association. And I have the sheetrock, everything on the inside of the sheetrock. You're saying plywood on the outside.
That, that's my current understanding, but I'll, I'll defer to sending you a copy of the association documents, so we can answer that with 100% surety.
Okay, because, you know, we had quite a discussion when, when they come out to, when we made up our regulations part of it, and what the insurance covers and what you have to cover. And you have to be very, some people thought that the only thing they had to buy was homeowners insurance. I mean, uh, I mean, you don't just like your, um, renters insurance. Because they would only cover their furniture and stuff. Well, something would happen, they'd have been in trouble. So you gotta have a matrix specifying all of this when you go into the condo stuff. Yes, okay, all right.
Thanks, Kenny. I, I would like to say, though, that it has nothing to do with the approval that we get.
I know that.
Okay, thank you. We'll get it.
Any additional questions or discussion?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
So Kevin, Kevin moved, can you flip it back to the, so I can see the motions?
You want all, sorry.
I should have printed an agenda.
Yeah.
My fault, no, it's okay, thank you, all right. So do we have a motion to recommend the council to approve the minor revisions for the preliminary plat? Kevin moved. Jim seconded.
Thank you. Jeff Kater?
Aye.
Terry Trimpy? Uh, Kenny Jones?
Aye.
Mark Ross?
Aye.
Lisa Jepson?
Aye.
Kevin Neef?
Aye.
Jim Craig?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, we are now ready for item C, which is a public input meeting. This is to consider the resolution for recommendation to city council to approve the KNS investment request to rezone lot number one of Haddish's First Edition in Lynn County, Iowa, from A to C3, amending the zoning district map as specified in ordinance 165, section 165.17. I'd like to ask if we have received any written or oral comments, Tiffany?
We have not received anything.
All right, so we have not received any written or oral comments. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on behalf of the request or the project? Please come up and state your name.
Uh, my name is Matt Shock, uh, with KNS Investments. So, um, I think quite a few of you are familiar, back in 2020, this came up by the last time around. The staff report was very thorough about why we're revisiting it here tonight. I think they answered a lot of questions, and I appreciate your effort. I guess basically, uh, I want to ask you if you have any questions for us, like my request, if we just simply reconfirm? You know, the, I think, I, the only thing that's changed over the last two years is kind of just this project we've seen right before us here. There's a lot of growth in this area. And I think this, maybe it wasn't apparent before, but it appears like things are going to the original, uh, comprehensive plan. And, um, the comprehensive plan does support this rezoning. And I guess I just ask you to kind of clear this cloud currently over, and get your support for recommendation council for see-throughs on if you have any questions.
I see here that you have, um, are you putting in some residential homes in there?
Um, so I think what you may be referring to-
Well, that's the next door one.
Yeah, that's neighboring property.
Yep, okay, all right.
If I might, chairman?
Yes.
Chair, chairperson.
There are, there are some on the commission map that were not on the original commission. And so we want to make sure that they're up to speed on exactly what we're doing. We did try to give them enough information, uh, in the handout and in the memo. Just to clarify, the reason we're revisiting it has nothing to do with the rezoning that was done before. So that, and that's never been, that, that was not in question. So the results of the last, um, planning and zoning meeting that handled it was a part of the memo as well. So if you have any questions on what was, or, uh, feel free to, to give Matt a question there.
Question on what's C3, we're all going to put on that.
Uh, C3 is the zoning between C2 and C4. Well, that makes a lot of sense.
We would hope so.
Thank you, thank you.
Mark, if you throw a seven in there, you're going to be upset.
All right, all right, all ready, I got it. C, C4 is general highway businesses. C, C3 is a little bit of a cross-section between highway businesses and neighborhood businesses, so a little less intense. And then, of course, C2 is what you would find within neighborhood businesses. Though they all include retail and office space and general service spaces. Uh, the biggest difference you might notice would be contractor and heavy industry. So as you get to the C4, there are contractor, um, opportunities that are allowed. There are those same opportunities allowed as conditional uses in some cases for a C3 and not at all in a C2.
C3, would that cover like a gas station?
A C3 does allow a gas station. In fact, there are C2 that can be in a, or a, a gas station that could be in a C2 as a convenience store.
You would have an auto repair shop.
You would not have an auto repair shop, however. Correct.
Even chiropractor's office.
Yes. All the professional offices would, would qualify in a C3, and in a smaller version in a C2. Churches are actually allowed in, I think, uh, don't call me, almost every zone, including the residential zone.
I want hotel and hotels, sir.
I'd have to look, they are in a C3, I don't know about a C2. They are in C3, C4, CPR zones.
But you actually, did I read that you're actually contemplating for the transitional housing on the back west and south side?
Yeah, in, in the trip, you know, maybe there's, kind of missed this initial wave here of what's going on south of us in Edgewood. But I still think there's location, location, all the feedback we got that that could be in play. Problem is, is until we kind of have that in hand, we're still just on the corner of Edgewood and County Home Road. So we're looking at it as, until we decide we need or want to split it up, that that's why we're going to the C3 based on the corner and where we are next to interstate and such.
Pat, could they have housing on a C3 then?
You can do housing, you can do multi-family housing in a C3 as part of a planned unit development.
Like housing for?
Yes, or, or even adjacent buildings, if it's all part of a, a planned unit development, by definition. Exactly, exactly what we're doing on Robbins Road and in our downtown, um, town center.
So with a hotel, there wouldn't be a floor limitation?
The overall development code does have floor limitations in Hiawatha. I don't, I don't know what they are. And it depends on which zone you're in. So building heights are one of the components depending on which zone you're in.
When I was reading the, um, materials for today, now, um, I was, I guess I don't remember where we were at with the, um, I know that there were some objections from the neighbors to the west at some point, or has that all been handled or solved? Or were beyond that, or I, I just, I just know that there were some or had been some.
I brought the handy dandy letter with me, just to refresh my memory. But I did include all of their objections in my overview, because we had an opportunity last time around. So I, I included that information in my memo to you, which did, it basically took each one of their items and explained why we didn't think it was an issue. So because they followed into the comprehensive plan as we've got it set up, and because they followed the necessary processes the way we view them, we disagree with the letter, but our uniform, our unified development code also accommodates most of the issues that they had brought forward, all the way from lighting design to buffers between them and the residential zones, all of that is encompassed in our code.
So just to clarify, and Pat, make sure I say this right, the purpose of our commission is to ask some big questions. Does the proposal fit within the comprehensive plan? And does the proposal recognize all of the codes that must be met? So for example, if there is lighting that a neighbor objects to, our purview is to say, is the lighting a part of a project that fits within the comprehensive plan? And does the lighting meet the codes for the city, for development in the city of Hiawatha? Did I state that properly?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's our purview, to ask those questions. Now, you may or may not be in a position to say this, but would you like to share any information about how your project will support the growth that's in that area? We're all seeing these houses, and I'm assuming that this will provide benefits. Are you in a position to share how that might work?
I, I think with this rezoning, it definitely would lend itself to having those service providers have a place, you know, available land for them to set up, uh, services that would benefit that area, that fast-growing area up there. So I think it's more appealing, you know, to every couple of years as this thing keeps growing, and it seems to be quite rapid, that, uh, that's kind of where we're looking at it, too. You know, I have my personal opinion, living where I do relative proximity about what I think would be nice out there, but, uh, you know, I think, you know, you can, there'd be some convenience values, you know, if you need a gallon of milk on a Sunday, you know, where would you run to? Kind of thing, you know, that kind of just stuff you don't think about, it becomes part of natural routine. Plus with the growth of the tower terrace and everything kind of pushing that direction. You know, we're just trying to, you know, let people, or let that option be out there.
Does C3 also cover a daycare center?
Daycare centers are allowed in all zones as well. They are conditional uses in residential zones.
Well, I think you made your requirement, I was to say, you do have people that lived there for a long time, and it is a transition zone, so to the extent that you can accommodate some, they come from age, or if we'd be willing, but that's great. The other thing I would ask, is that's about mile eight of, like, Robles or Begetery there, one?
I believe he's taking donations for the Jim Craig memorial gatorade. Get, get your, get your name on the little hood over the stand, and we'll be all ready to roll.
I guess that was one of the things we kind of illustrated in this one, too, with just, you know, I don't, we, we showed, you know, what kind of provisions are in the code itself for those, you know, it's not completely you need to have a commercial next to a residential. And there's a, and some of those lines on the second sheet, or it should be the second sheet there, that kind of shows, you know, what the traditional setback would be for this, plus the fact that it's, needs to be a buffer zone to be, uh, the residential, you know, there's provisions in there. And, um, we still have to go through the formal, whatever we bring to the table, it still has to, you know, the requirements in terms of the lighting, light solution.
And Pat, we, several of us have watched the informational video and the company documents for the healthy neighborhood idea, and this is consistent with, with those recommendations, right?
This is very consistent.
Okay. All right, uh, fellow commissioners, any, any questions for the petitioner? Heather, I thank you. Any questions for staff? Further questions for staff? All right, I guess to be thorough, I should ask if there are any members of the audience who would like to speak in favor of the proposal? All right, I guess to be thorough, I should ask if there are any members of the audience who would like to speak in favor of the proposal?
Or opposed.
Seeing none, are there any members of the audience who would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Seeing none. Does the petitioner have any additional comments? I think you had a chance to finish earlier. And then, any additional comments or questions from up here?
So is this the comprehensive plan?
That is actually out of the comprehensive plan, that is the future land use map. Showing the location of this would be right underneath one of our neighborhood nodules for a neighborhood center. And it's picked there, basically, I mean, it was rather interesting to watch the healthy neighborhood information come through and talk about the distances between those healthy neighborhood centers. And we had already placed them on the map, and believe it or not, they're almost exactly the perfect distance of two miles apart. And so we think we've got a really good plan, and yes, it fits right on with the future land use map.
I want to officially then end the public input meeting and then give my fellow commissioners a chance for additional discussion amongst ourselves.
Oh, and just to, so you know, Madam Chair, there are no comments from the YouTube video.
Thank you, yes, thank you. All right, seeing no discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion. The motion would be to recommend the city council approval of the KNS investment request to rezone lot number one of Hattish First Edition from A to C3. May I have a motion? Kevin has moved, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Kenny has seconded. Before we vote, any questions? Further discussion? All right, roll call please. Lisa Jepson?
Aye.
Mark Ross?
Aye.
Kenny Jones?
Aye.
Jeff Cader?
Aye.
Jim Craig?
Aye.
Kevin Neef?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last order of business for the evening is a motion to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn? Jim has moved. Kenny has seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are finished, thank you so much. Have a good evening, everybody. I don't want to brag, but we got done in time to watch the Hawkeyes play tonight.
Thank you, Lisa.
Go Hawks!
Oh my goodness, thanks, ma'am.